Our Saturday morning work session in preparation for the regular council meeting that will happen on Monday. Uh, in attendance, we have myself, Council President Wolf, Council Persons, uh, Benedetti, Shrimp, Bruger, and McNamara. We also have Mayor Hughes, uh, Village Council Jesse Champ, and uh, Village Planner Eric Fisher in attendance. Uh, okay, so, uh, first point, uh, I guess I need to let you all know I am not gonna be there on Monday. I have a family thing that I will need to attend to. So you all, yeah, raise your hand. Yes.
No, you're always finish, okay.
No, no, I'm good.
I'm in the same boat. Um, I, right now, we did a learning experience at the office, making sure who could record and how we could record and all of that. So I think we have that pretty much ready to go now. Um, the, um, sorry, the, um, I have a choir concert at seven thirty. It's my seniors finer, final choir concert and all that, and it's at seven thirty. So, um, um, normally I would figure it out, and this one's our last one ever, so I'm going.
Yeah. I'd be mad at you if you didn't.
There you go. So, we, we think we have it figured out. Um, so, nobody log into Village Conference, because what we have learned, it is the first person that logs into Village Conference is the only person that can livestream, and Chief has access to the Village Facebook page because he's an admin, um, on all of the Village pages. So he can livestream to the Village Facebook page. So until we get more people on there, or whatever we decide we wanna do, he is the person that can do it, but only if he logs into Village Conference.
Okay, so, fingers crossed that'll work out for everybody on Monday. Uh, now, let's roll through, what was that, Mark?
Real quick, just to get it out of the way, I recommend with Tiffany and Brian gone, that Diane run the meeting then as the most recent past president of council.
Yeah, that would be good, if you could.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, let's move along here. Uh, so as, as usual, um, you know, I'd like to work our way through the, the meeting packet as much as we can, just to make sure that we are all aware of what we're aware of. Uh, we shouldn't have any real surprises. So, uh, moving along, I know that we got the, much of what would be the police report late last night along with the meeting packet. Uh, everybody should take their opportunity to re- review that. Um, and I guess Mayor Hughes, if you're not gonna be there, we're not gonna expect to get much of a, an engineer's update or, um.
My goal is, um, my goal, I will either A, get that to Diane before mine, um, kinda like I read his. Um, I do expect him to send me one. I mean, he does it every Monday. Assuming that he does, I will actually go ahead and forward that to her. Um, there's also a chance that I may, uh, uh, we're gonna assume I'm not gonna be there. So I will get both reports to Diane. Um, if I have anything, that way she can just read them like normal. Um, and then, or something else I was gonna tell you about that. I don't wanna keep going. I'll think of it.
But, eh, to that end, are we expecting any?
Nothing.
Uh, anything groundbreaking or shattering, so that, uh, you know, again, my, my primary purpose for reviewing these at this meeting is to make sure that we're prepared, right? But I would hate to find out that, uh, we, we know that the sky is falling directly above Minerva Park at a business meeting, right? That's a, that's a work session kind of conversation.
Mine is gonna be, um, trying to figure out what for her to say, because I, there's nothing going on.
And if, and if that's the case, that can be the case, right? There's, yeah. Presuming similarly from fiscal officer, uh, counsel, do you have any, anything major to report with what's, what's going on? Jesse?
Sorry, no.
Okay, uh, I think you guys, you guys are still working with Columbus on figuring out what sewers or what, is there?
Yes, and it, it's almost more so in Mike's camp at the moment. They're still not contentious. But yes, I'm keeping it apprised of the situation.
Got it. Okay, very good.
I asked real quick about, uh, about what's going on with Franklin County and the permitting process. I'd.
That, that's right. So that had been pushed to the back, uh, back of the table. I, Eric and I have been trying to get a call with, Eric, can you remind me of her name?
Uh, Jen is her name, and she's, she's been responsive but busy, but the, she's been trying to work on the prosecutor. They have a new one now, Jesse. That's what she told me.
And now that, you know, now that we mentioned that, and I'm glad you brought that up, Tony, I should've remembered that. I, I have an inroad now to the new prosecutor's office through another attorney in my office, and I think I can expedite this very quickly, now that I've been reminded of it. So let me do that. I, I can talk with him this weekend.
The prosecutor have to do with all of this?
So, so process has to do, Tony, because since we have a contract with them, all right? And since they are the administrator of the building code, it's their interpretation that matters, right? And so we had, we had some preliminary meeting and discussion, and everybody seems to be on board. And I think they just have to have their legal counsel get with our legal counsel, and everybody just has to sign off on it from a, who knows contractual standpoint. There's an addendum. I don't know. There's some little process items, and then we're done.
So the prosecutor is their legal attorney, legal?
Oh, yeah, for the county, one, one of them, someone's assigned.
Correct.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. All right, uh, which would bring us to you actually, Tony, uh, regarding planning and zoning report. Anything you'd wanna give us a heads up on there?
Well, I'll just tell you all, uh, we had a meeting over at the Lily Pond this, uh, on Wednesday. So that project is moving forward. That's really all I, all I have from, uh, planning and zoning. That, we're gonna start working on a, uh, pods, ordinance for storage pods. I believe is the only thing to report from planning and zoning.
I thought we have one, or is it?
That's the common, I think we started talking about it. I don't know that anything was finalized.
Cause I have to do a little research, uh, Councilman Wolf, and just make sure that nothing's on there, because Tony's absolutely right. We had a, I, I recall a large discussion, but when I did a cursory search, and maybe our, our ordinance is just not there, uh, online. Um, I had to do a little digging, just make sure what was and what wasn't approved. And if nothing was approved, as I told P and Z, we, we would bring it back to them and just send it up the chain, you know, get back on path.
So I recall at least one household who had a flooded basement and had a storage pod in their driveway for an extended period of time. And they, they were required to get a permit of some sort. Now, you know, whether the administration at that time made stuff up, I, I don't know, but, you know.
That's a nice way. Yeah, it wasn't, if I may, it wasn't made up. So if I, if I recall this correctly, so the administration, the mayor always has the authority to kinda step in, and they wanted to get some paperwork on it, I believe, if I recall this correctly. Um, and, and just make sure everyone was clearly aware of, you know, how long that needed to be in the front driveway. Cause technically speaking, you can interpret a pod in multiple ways. It, you just don't get to plop down a cargo container. You, on your driveway, whether it's in the bu, you know, if it's not on the books, it's just not permitted use within the residential district, right? So at the end of the day, we, the mayor is allowed to require special permits for things, and, and we just wanna make sure everyone's aware there's a timeframe, and we, we work with them, and that was the end of story.
Got. So what you're suggesting is the incident in memory was not a storage container permit, but a special use permit, and that, so what we're looking to do is, uh, create a, a, uh, uh, a codification of that particular use, and it's allowed nature.
Correct, correct.
Got it. Well, then, why didn't we just say that to begin with? Just, just feeling saucy. Okay, which, uh, brings us back to you, Eric anyhow. Uh, any updates from a village planning perspective?
Um, just, uh, any number of things going on. Happy with the new code enforcement officer. He's, uh, he's working out well and very, uh, knowledgeable and energetic, and we like that. Uh, hit the ground running type thing. Um, I'm just trying to think ahead real quick, cause it's early still, not enough coffee. Um, I suspect we're just gonna keep chugging along. I think you see the Westerville schools are moving on, got buildings up, stuff like that. So we're working through a lot of those admin items, and, uh, nothing crazy fortunately to report, unless Mayor did something.
Yeah, I have two things, um, two simple things, and it was only, again, Eric, sorry, I wasn't there yesterday. Could we get an update on if we need to get a sign? Or if we can get Westerville to get a sign to where people are not driving up Minerva Lake Road, and they're only using Farview again. I believe going in, there's a sign, but not going out, and somebody, um, sent me some pictures of extremely large automobiles driving up Minerva Lake Road, and they believe that Minerva Lake Road has been destroyed by the, you get the point.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll remind the, I'll remind, I mean, that's been very, made very clear to the contractors and subs. And I've, I've been in those meetings with a larger group, and, uh, I, I will say, hey, maybe we can use some signs.
Yeah, so, and it, it's just been recommended by a couple residents on Facebook a while back, and then somebody reminded me of it again. So I just wanted to see if we could, if we need to get signs, just let me know, but if we could get them, I'm sure they have some. So, um, that was number one, and then I, this is not, this is just with Eric. Um, if nobody knows, Eric's been working with the rehab facility, um, that backs Jordan Road. And he, I don't wanna say he has finally gotten them to, but I'm just gonna say, he has finally gotten them to put a fence all the way across the back. Um, so the residents over here are thrilled. Um, I will say, they did start the fence backwards, which honestly, I didn't even notice. And that is, you know, I, everybody knows that I do not pay attention to stuff like that, like I would've never, so, um.
That did get handled, Mayor, just so you know. They're gonna make their contractor reverse it.
I figured so, but anyways, that was the least of my concerns. I'm just hap, my husband even said the same thing. I'm just happy to see that. So, um, so just as an FYI, they are putting up a fence as well. So all the way across the back, they've already started it. They did get a permit. Um, and could not be any more happy that he stayed on them for probably close to what, a year before we finally got him to really?
There was a lot of discussion, yes.
Well, well, they kept changing ownerships that are not, whatever, so it's been difficult, but we are getting it.
Nice, and thank you, uh, for good work, too. Uh, anything else from planning?
No, not at this time. I'll, I may have a few updates at the meeting.
Sure. Uh, and then, MPCA Diane?
MPCA, uh, well, meeting won't be till Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, it's been pretty quiet.
Very good. Uh, committees, again, right, I, just to make sure everybody understands why I wanna go through these. And this meeting is just, uh, if there's anything earth shattering that we need to prepare for, right? Nobody should be blindsided. Uh, so just a quick run through of committee reports, uh, from activity from the month of April. Uh, Councilperson McNamara, anything to report from, uh, community?
Well, I spoke to the gentleman, well, I texted the gentleman who managed the pool and the vending for the pool, who say everything is running well. I was put into an email, I believe we all were, about chlorine supplies, which appears to be going well. Um, I'll update those things. Um, I would like to, if, if it's, it'll be very brief. For the lake cleanup coming up on the twelfth, thirteenth, or eighteenth, nineteenth, or whichever those two Saturday, Sundays are. Um, I assume it will be like last year, where we encourage residents to bring, you know, outdoor, you know, shovels, this, that, and the other, but we'll also have some that can be supplied. Is that the impression that, Madam Mayor, is that the impression you were under that we would be able to repeat? Okay, um, that sounds good. Uh, those are the two major things um, that I had going on, is that I asked the relevant parties that the pool is doing, and it seems to be doing well. And I just wanted to hammer out some of those final details about what we will be providing versus what residents will be encouraged to provide for the, uh, lake cleanup. Other than that, we're good.
I'm great.
Oh, I also sent, I also sent, I, I do apologize. I also sent an email to the mayor and Tony about recommending native plant lists for the village, for future plantings. Has anything happened with those, or is that still just kind of?
Well, I s, I, I, I wanna know if you've gone with Lisa about this. I tried to find the, you know, she had put together a list of trees from Minerva Park, and I can't find it. It's not part of the code.
Uh, you know, we did find the tree list, actually. Kelly and myself did, and, um, it has been updated for the twenty-first century, to put it kindly. It's, it's a great list, don't get me wrong, but there's a few tree species that no longer are recommended by the, um, big authorities on that subject.
What I would recommend is you and Lisa hash in that, because I think Lisa just did that recently.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think she did. I, I reviewed the list, and, uh, uh, whoever updated it, just said Kelly updated it, or whatever, but, um, yeah. Yeah, it, it, yeah, it has all the, uh, current recommendations as far as I know from my resources.
Yeah.
It does need to be updated, absolutely, and I'm sure that, uh, Lisa would agree. I, I think if, David, if, uh, I'm more available during the day, and, and, uh, I can show it to Lisa and, and get her feedback if you want me to.
That's, that's wonderful. I, I applied for a day shift position on another unit, so I'll keep everyone in the loop. Um, but yeah, that's, that would be very helpful.
All right, I, I can do that. So I won't be, I wouldn't be ready to talk about that tomorrow.
Obviously.
On Monday, but certainly on the next, uh, certainly by, uh, if Lisa's not on vacation or some, something like that, we should be able to get back to you next week.
Excellent, cause the biggest thing of my, that I wanna get this hammered out for is for the school and the community building. So, that's all I got, guys.
Very good. Uh, finance committee, I, I, at this moment, I cannot a hundred percent say that I recall that we met last month, or if we did, it was, uh, it was regarding TIF, TIF revenue financing, and we've already discussed all of that. I don't think there's any additional report necessary. Uh, streets, uh, Tiffany, is there anything you wanna, yeah?
No, let's back up first.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just as a finance thing for you, um, the yearly budget meeting that has to be publicized and all of that is planned for, were planned for, um, June twenty-eighth, because that is a night that Kim is able to be there. It's already on a Monday night before our meeting. It's, we're gonna do it right before our actual council meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and that's just the public hearing thing. And then the, the goal is, and this is kind of a legislative and financing for you guys, but I just wanna mention it. The first reading on it is not, it's not ready. Obviously, it's not ready yet for the first reading. Um, so the plan is to start readings on it, and it will be third reading for June twenty-eighth, but it will need to be passed as an emergency, because it's due to the county or whoever it goes to, um, like the twenty-something of July. So because of where our meeting falls, it falls a couple days shy of it. So, um, we would like to do that as an emergency, um, because we want to take our time making sure that it gets done correctly. But if anybody wants to make a note, June twenty-eighth is gonna be the meeting date for that budget meeting. The budget hearing meeting that has to be publicized.
If we move a first reading up to Monday, we shouldn't have to pass as an emergency, even if we don't.
I don't think it's anywhere, well, um.
Not even first reading ready?
You mean my first reading ready?
I mean, you know.
Ask, because that would work if we did do it. Um, and then the other thing I was thinking, and just, you know, I was thinking on those same lines. If we do have like a quick reading on that, like, second meet, second Monday or whatever, we could definitely kick those three meetings out and have the time, cause I think it's only like, I think it's July twentieth, so we're not that far off. So I think kicking it one or, and mail time, or however we drop it off time, or whatever we do with it. Let me see, let me find that out, but that would be a worst case.
So I think we had agreed to not have a mid-month work session, because we had a work session last month, or last Monday.
We could potentially in, in June, is what I was thinking on that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Never mind.
But then that would be a, but that would be a third reading, if we did it, and that's not, that doesn't feel nice. Like, it's one thing to move things along. Go ahead.
The reason that, never mind, I've already figured it back out. She is not available June fourteenth, and it can't be passed until we have the meeting. So the meeting schedule, cause she's at Johnstown on the first Monday, same Monday as we do. She can be there on our second Monday.
Got it.
So that is, that's the reason. So as long as I keep talking myself through it, um, June twenty-eighth is the date she can be there for the public meeting.
So it's good.
And I have on my calendar that we have a work session on the seventeenth, is that incorrect?
I, I'm, it's your.
My, my recollection, since we're talking about it, we might as well hash it out, that when we agreed to meet last, or, yeah, last Monday, it was with the knowledge that we weren't meeting the seventeen.
I guess the whole point is to somebody have something that they're dying to talk about.
Is, yeah, that would be the question, if, uh, if there is a, something that we need to meet that day, if we keep that Monday open for those kinds of purposes, but we had kind of tentatively agreed that we weren't doing four Mondays in a row. All right, then, moving on to, uh, streets. Mayor Hughes, you, you've been given the streets update for?
Yes, um, so just nothing. I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, we really haven't done too much. Um, Eric, I know, uh, one of the things that if we could get an answer for when the, and again, I wasn't there, and I, this is normally stuff Eric and I do on. Um, if we could get the asphalt schedule by Monday night, so we could let people know Monday night when we expect them to do the asphalt in front of the, um, lake.
Sure, uh, I, I know Bill is putting that with AJ, is putting that on his schedule. Um, I will verify the date.
Yes, so if we could just, just so we could announce when they were doing it. Um, but other than that, streets, really, we have absolutely nothing going on. Um, I am expecting some updates, obviously, from Mike, uh, for Monday night, but I could ramble on here and act like there's something going on, but there's not.
No, no need to ramble right now. It's a, uh, again, this is really a, an awareness moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Councilperson Benedetti, any, anything to make this body aware of, uh, in advance of Monday for safety?
Well, not so much in, uh, advance. I, I'd like to take a moment here to talk about, uh, I, well, to get a feeling on what, what the rest of council's ideas are about with police practices. You know, I've got it, I've gotta tell you that, uh, you know, the incident that blew up on Facebook with, uh, you know, the kid that got pulled over and his car searched has given me, uh, some concerns about that whole process. Uh, and, you know, I, you know, I don't even know where to start with this, and that. I get, you know, to get right to the point is, you know, pulling people over for minor, uh, infractions. You know, I understand, uh, you know, that that's a common police practice, and I'm not in favor of doing stuff like that. Uh, you know, in, in this particular case, the thing that bothers me the most is not so much the police pulling someone over for, uh, a burned-out license plate light, where the police, in my opinion, cross the line, is when they ask somebody to search their car when they haven't done anything else wrong. And, you know, I gotta ask the police if, do they do this to everybody? And if they don't do it to everybody, w, w, you know, how do they decide who they are going to ask to search their car? And who, who doesn't? Because this is the thing to me, that, you know, it may not be racial profiling. I'll get back with you there, Mayor. You don't have to hold, cause I got a few, uh.
It, it, this just belongs in a streets meeting, and Chief has asked you numerous times.
Here, okay, Mayor, let me finish here. Is that, I don't wanna get, can I finish, please, Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, can I? Please. Thank you. I would like to get the feeling, uh, I don't wanna move forward with this if council isn't in favor of asking our police to stop doing this. You know, and this is the other side of this. If I could finish, please. You do that. I really wish you'd let me finish, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, you know, the, the chief re- recently posted his pictures of the guns and drugs that he got off the street, and that evoked a response from the family of the kid that got pulled over. They're not satisfied with what happened. We haven't ever put out a public, uh, statement about what happened. And in my opinion, it's not much different than the George Floyd incident with a, you know, how do I say, it wasn't a video showing it, but a, a Facebook or social media complaint about the way our police operate. And, you know, when I see the pictures of the guns that the police have gotten, you know, four or five guns they've gotten off the street. Mm, you know, my take on that is that i- it shows how, uh, serious the problem is here in our neighborhood, and that our police are running into guns, and I don't understand. I'd like to tell our police, you guys don't have to put yourselves in harm's way to try to get guns off the street on my behalf, because I prefer you guys to be more reactive than proactive. You know, so I, I wanna get a, a, a feeling from the rest of council, if this is something they wanna do, or they wanna just let our police pull people over, ask them if they can search every single person they pull over. You know, because that, to me, i- it may not be ra- racial profiling, but it sure looks like it. And that's what the impression is in the public right now. And our, and our, you know, position on this has been to not say anything about it and hope it blows over. Well, like I pointed out, the first time the chief posed something about the stuff that he had gotten off the streets, it evoked a very hostile response from the family and other people. You know, so I, I don't wanna go down this road of talking about police practices unless the rest of council is in favor of doing something like this. And I don't know how we go about figuring that out. I would go around and say, what do you think? You think our police should be pulling people over, you know, going out looking for trouble?
I would be open to having that discussion sometime.
So, Tony, I, I am also open to that discussion. Um, I don't know that you and I are going to land of a, of, of a congruent mind, right? But, uh, but I am, I am open to those discussions, right? I, I think that we, if we go down that path, I think that we should take a data-driven approach to these things. And that would be the first step that I would like to move towards.
But what data would you need?
Well, I, well, I, we, we're gonna need our officers to start collecting data, so that we can actually judge their actions based on, on real data.
I'd love to get a copy of, they do, they provide every day a log as to what they get called, and, you know, I think it's daily call logs, you know, that I'd like to take a look at.
Yeah, so, eh, but yeah, so, so what you have now is at least three council people on board with looking at it. Uh, and I think those three were the safety committee, right? Isn't that, uh, me, you, and, and Councilperson McNamara, we are the safety committee?
And I definitely think when you talk about data, that there does need to be uh, complete data. You know, how many stops did you make? Did you ask to search the thing? And yes, uh, what was the, the ethnicity and gender of the person? And are they, you know, we know New York's stop and frisk largely targeted minorities, male minorities, and was awful, and in a year, they'd stop and frisk a million people and find seventy thousand people doing something wrong, which meant nine hundred and thirty thousand people were just being harassed.
Right.
Didn't it also in, end up with half of litigation fees and a federal injunction at the end of it as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Hughes.
Okay, so, like I had started to say, Chief has offered to have this conversation. Chief, there are actual answers to every single question he has asked. He just needs to schedule a safety meeting. That's it.
Now, what I need to do is get information, Mayor, and I've been waiting to do that until I get.
Tony, i- it's very simple. It's been over a month, and this is the third time you've brought this up into one of our meetings. And it's just very simple. I, I'm, I don't wanna speak for him. I think I could answer every single question that he did. Just hang on.
You don't have the information that I'm looking for, so I don't know how you can answer the questions. I haven't asked to get to look at the call logs yet. Have you looked at them?
That was not the questions that you asked when you were explaining your whole scenario as to who do they pull over, why do they pull over, you know, all of those kinds of things. Those are answers he will be able to give you very simply, how he has, what they do differently now, since that particular situation has happened. There, there are answers to the questions that you just asked, that. There there are answers to the questions that you just asked that I think a lot of council might be interested in hearing. Um I don't think it's my place to go through and say any of that, just because I don't want to misspeak for him. Um but this, again, it's been asked to have a safety meeting and I think all of your answers, and this isn't negative, Tony. I think that it would be very beneficial. There is nobody, it sounds like, against having this conversation where we end up. Like Brian said, I don't think everybody's gonna end up on the same page, but you obviously have concerns, so have a meeting and ask them. That's all I wanted to say.
I'm I'm sorry, but like I said earlier today, I've been working fifteen hours a freaking day or.
I I told Tony, again, I I told I don't disagree, but I think. The the questions that you just asked, he can answer very quickly, very easily. There are outcomes to some of the questions that you've asked. And you will, I think you will be totally happy with the outcome of some of the answers that you just asked. I just don't want to be the one to do it.
I don't want answers from the chief. I want to see the data. That's what I and I haven't done that and you're right. I need to ask those questions and I will.
Correct, but the questions that you did ask are answers that he can give you.
I think I think what the mayor is trying to say, if I may try to restate things, because I think that's useful. Is, you know, questions regarding policy changes post the the Facebook search incident, right? If 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 the chief has instituted a policy change, that would be useful information, right? Because the story that we had received at that time was that that particular officer uh was systematic, was was regularly searching. More than was typical. So, you know, I'm just making this up, but I could imagine that the chief has instituted a policy such that that's not the case anymore. Right? If that's the answer, that's probably the answer we we were looking for.
I don't want to.
Specific regard.
I don't want to speak, but I would say you're accurate.
Right, so, right, so that's one of your questions that does in fact have an answer, right? So part of what I would love, right, and I'm on the safety committee meeting or safety committee with you. I'd love, you know, to, if you could. What's the word I want to compile? Uh a list of the data that you know that we already have, that you would like to see. And the questions that you would like to have answered, right? Put that in an email and schedule a meeting so that we can, as a committee. You're right, review, receive that data and receive the answers to those questions and then we can figure a path forward from there. Right? Otherwise, we will just talk at each other for hours on end and not get anywhere. Because, you know, without without knowing what we want, we can't really get anywhere.
That's fair.
That's that's unfair.
Absolutely.
So if if you can get that to us, we look forward to it and uh look forward to doing good work. All right. Yep.
Great way. Arrange my words to make it exactly what I'm trying to say.
You know, that's uh I I kind of feel like that that's, I don't know. All right, uh that brings us right down to the the meat of it, which is legislation. Uh councilperson Bruger, I don't I don't know that this, that the packet that we got has all the legislation that we're circling with, so. Um hopefully you got it uh elsewhere's, but uh.
We'll certainly do not, but.
All right, well, I'm. I'm dumping that whole load on you. That's that's not my problem.
Are we at legislation?
We are at legislation.
Okay, um Kate Mark. I I I don't want to step on your toes, but because it's a little bit of a mess right there. Um if you don't mind myself and Eric taking over this little itty bitty part, because there's three pieces of legislation and I think that. Instead of trying to figure it out, Eric can ex- well, myself and Eric can explain what those are.
Find which of the six little things had the legislation, but real quick before I turn that over to you. Um because it does occur to me that I don't have a legislative meeting scheduled for May. I think Monday is gonna be pushing a little early, because one of the things I'm gonna want is. David, hopefully, to have a rough draft of his native plants resolution. Could we do a legislative meeting Monday, the twenty fourth at six o'clock?
Sure.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
The the before a regular. The the standing legislative committee meeting.
Is it not on there?
That's right time.
Was, because I don't have it written in my tiny calendar and I really think that's because I never brought it up and scheduled.
Here, let me see if it's on.
It's my fault.
Well, it's clearly your fault, Mark, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, so you guys would prefer, you guys would prefer that I have. The finalized list run through, you know, like Lisa and Diane and myself and all that. To have a attachments to the native plants resolution, then would that be what I'm interpreting?
That would be great, but since this would just be the first time in committee and. Maybe a first reading after, probably not, probably the first reading would come after that. You have time to get those in order.
All right, and we'll we'll get that rolling then.
Mayor Hughes, I I the I have the village calendar synced to my my G my Google calendar and it's not coming through right now. I'm not getting any of the village stuff on there, so I I'm not able to confirm nor deny.
I'm pretty good about copying the meetings I need down in my tiny calendar. Sorry, didn't get out in time to make the May announce meeting things.
Right.
I'm not, or yeah, I I think it's not on there, so um. Actually, just so you know, the twenty fourth meeting's not even on there, so that's. Crazier, so because those were actually done a year in advance, so somehow that is deleted. Because Becky actually, I I think, oh no, she didn't. Or they're just gone for some reason.
Maybe that year has elapsed. Was it done a year in advance last May and uh or last April and it just. We got to the end of the.
So we will make sure that we get the rest of these, because at some point, no, at at some point, these were all on here. Um through the entire year, because that way people could see it. I have no idea where they went, but let's look for it tomorrow or Monday, so. Um we'll make sure that we get all of those back up there and yes, we will make sure that we get it posted. Um because I did sign a bunch of those, so I feel like I did see legislation, so maybe it's just not and yeah, so. Let's figure it out. Let's get it on there and I will put it down for six PM if it's not advertised and we'll get it to you guys Monday afternoon.
And then for that meeting, of course, we just talked about Dave's uh native plant thing. Um Eric, I assumed you got the email I sent with the revisions on the noise ordinance.
Yes, sir, that's correct. I did.
So we could have that to look at.
Yes.
And then I will. Finally get around to actually rewriting the uh flag ordinance to take out the community. Comment section on it, which is, I believe, what we read on it the last legislative meeting. And then as far as tomorrow's legislation, yes, I would be more than happy, Mayor Hughes, for you and Eric to uh take over and talk about that.
Perfect. So Eric, I'll go first real quick, because mine's probably simpler than yours. Um the first thing I will talk about is there's gonna be a supplemental appropriation. I do think that one might be attached on there. Is that one on there?
Yeah.
Okay, so what that is for is praying to goodness gracious that it's our last one, but this is the. Let me say it right. This is one more of the. First quarter last year issue with. Not paying taxes, federal tax withholding penalty from the first quarter of twenty twenty one. And um we did bump it up a little bit, um and I can get you guys the exact amount, only because I should have wrote that down. But I told her to do it just a little bit more, um just in case there's another one that pops up. And I do think that this is gonna have to be done a little quicker, because the bills due at the end of. It's a very short amount of time before we get another penalty, so if I need her to do this um to waive readings, I'll let you guys know, because I don't. I'm not sure how fast we need to do it, um so I will verify that, but that's what it's for. It is federal withholdings from uh the first quarter of last year. And yes, we just now got the bill for it, um and we're praying that this is the last one we see, so that's that.
Eight twenty twenty one and it's listed as compensation and damages for twenty four seventy. I found the stuff.
Yeah, that's it.
So, and um for some reason, I feel like it's like twelve hundred or fifteen hundred or something. I can't remember exactly what it was, but.
The the increase, it was uh current amount is five hundred, increase is twenty four hundreds, two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, yeah, I can't remember exactly what it was. I'll have to bring that, but we did bump it up a little bit more in case we get one from like the state of Ohio or anything like that over the next couple of weeks. So we just kind of wanted to be prepared that we aren't trying to rush things through. So we're hoping that we don't have another one. Obviously, if we do get another one, you guys would know, um because I think it's important for you guys to know those kind of things, but. That way we wouldn't have to bring it back legislatively, um making sure we just have a little cushion in there in case we do get another one. So that was it for that, um the supplemental appropriation. I don't have anymore. I don't really expect this document to change, but obviously. Um if anything else comes, we usually do try to throw them on there, but we don't really have anything pressing. Um Eric and I and code enforcement officer and Leah and every uh basically administration has been working on the fee schedule. Um the fee schedule, there has been some things that we just haven't liked, things that aren't accurate, things that um. Needed adjusted. You guys just did the fee schedule not too long ago, but we didn't want to muddy the waters when we did it. I'm just gonna be blunt. Um when we were fixing it for Westerville City Schools, um but that's how long we've been talking about the fact that. We have solicitor permits on there, um that the amount doesn't really make sense for what we're doing, but maybe council has a different. Idea about that. Um obviously, Tony, I know we've always talked about the um ice cream trucks paying a hundred and fifty dollars to come in the village. Doesn't make a lot of sense. There are printing fees on there. I think it was like ten cents a copy. Um some of those are actually different from what the policy actually is, so it's trying to get the fee schedule to match what we actually do. Or the fee schedule, um what we want it to do, so that's kind of where the pod conversation started again. Um we did get the chicken um added onto the list, so we've just been kind of going through and. Um I kind of wanted everybody to look at it, see if they have any issues, problems, concerns, because we're, we are going to. Try to get this fixed. And Eric, do you want to chime in on this one before you go to the next one? But that's what we're doing with the fee schedule. The fee schedule just has some errors on it that we want to get fixed.
No, Mayor, I think you summed it up and I think on the printing thing, there wasn't, the printing thing was fine. It was Leah had to. The mayor's court on her end, that was all, so it was it was already accepted and good.
Perfect. So, yeah, there it's just, it's just tightening it up, so um but. We can kind of go over and show you guys exactly what we changed and I don't know exactly what we changed, because I'm not looking at it. Um but that's why the fee schedule's back in front of you guys again.
Okay, so the changes were.
Go for it.
Golf cart inspection was added for twenty five dollars.
And that's because it just happened, like we just had somebody reach out to us in the last couple of weeks and. And other municipalities do have it, other cities have it, we just didn't have one.
But you say golf cart inspection?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's to make them street um worthy.
Okay, pool rental, um members and employees only resident, two hundred and fifty dollars for two hours. A hundred dollars each additional, non-resident, three hundred dollars for two hours, a hundred dollars each additional.
And that just came from the pool um legislation, as an FYI.
And then, of course, as you mentioned, the peddler registration fee of a hundred dollars, discuss possible changes. That does seem ridiculous. I'm in favor of just letting ice cream trucks drive through our neighborhood if they want to. That's just me.
Well, and.
Only changes, see on the uh the the thing you sent over or that was filled out.
Right, and and that that came about and just as, so you guys know and you guys can decide what you want to do with that. Um obviously, we invite the food trucks in. Um we would prefer the food trucks that I invite in to have some sort of like permit that just says that they're allowed to be there. Um the whole theory behind that is I don't obviously want, or I don't think of many residents just want seven food trucks parking at every entrance of our village. Um at any given time, so we want there to be a process. Right now, I'm in, you know, I I hate to say it this way, but right now I'm in control of it. Um and I think that residents probably like the fact that there's one truck periodically. And we don't just have somebody sitting in here seven days a week, um because that would get annoying pretty fast, but. Uh in our surroundings, we have started to see that there are food trucks just being parked, um and we want to make sure that that's not happening. And that's it.
So is the proposed uh fee schedule in the packet, the new?
Yeah, Mark must have it, so it, yeah, it must have, it should be in there. So and so I guess this is the next point. If there's anything on there that you guys are questioning. Um don't like, whatever, I'm not saying, you know, you guys have to vote for it, but if there's any other changes on there that we're missing, let us know if there's something that doesn't look right. Or legislation doesn't match something, um those are just some of the ones that I know we really wanted to take a look at and get them resolved.
The the fee schedule just a few, it's just a first reading for Monday, right? So we'll have, yeah, okay.
And the whole theory behind this is to get it done, um obviously, this summer, it, some things are busier. So just getting it on the books and getting it ready for the summer.
And for those of you having trouble navigating the meeting packet like I was, uh the thing is, instead of one PDF of everything. Each thing has its own, so you might have to scroll down and through all the different PDFs to find the stuff.
For those that want to wait till Monday, we will get the, we will get the actual updated fixed packet out Monday as soon as I get there. The pretty way, and it'll be up on the website. All right, Eric, do you want to go over the last piece, only because I and Jesse may even chime in, but.
Yeah, this is just a, this is just a first reading for council to consider on the authorization of phase two. Uh which is uh having Garmin Miller move forward, having the contract negotiated and agreed to and signed by the mayor and and. In reviewing, they would be then moving forward with the major phase, which is preparing all the building plans. Uh and then moving to bidding process, so that is the next phase and then uh ultimately, once the bids come back in, council will review. And will accept somebody and that's, of course, some months down the road for that. This goes back to after selecting Garmin Miller as the architect through the. Process at the end of last year, I think it was uh twenty twenty dash twenty three was the, thirty two was the resolution, if anybody wants to refer to that. But at that time, council had, council had uh accepted Garmin Miller and this was a then phase one and then now this is phase two, so that's where we're at.
So very simple.
And we're we're ready to move forward with that, everybody. We had a, we had a special meeting last Monday. So, does anybody have any? And that would be the time to address any additional concerns, right?
Well, we were waiting for, the way it ended was, we were waiting for information.
Right. Did you ever get a response to that request, Eric, for?
So, yeah, I did speak with the architect. He's gonna prepare a couple of things, um and I should hope to have those on Monday for you. Uh obviously, all of those things can be considered to continue to be discussed prior to the third reading. Rereading process recommended by legal counsel on this.
Okay, very good. Right, then, is that the end of?
Yes, sir, I'll tell you how.
All right, then, if that's the end, uh is there, was there, was there any other legislation? Since uh we have meeting packet kerfuffle, was that all the legislation we had to discuss?
That's all I have for now.
Okay, then, uh and a councilperson Bruger, did you have anything else for legislation that you wanted to bring up?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, uh then, we uh. I've always thought it was weird. We put new business before old business, so I'm I'm gonna talk about old business first. Which was the first thing in old business that I wanted to to make sure we were on board or on the same page on was, you know, the follow-ups to our discussion from last week's work session. Which we got our answers already from Eric. Did anybody else have any other old business that they wanted to? Mayor Hughes, you raising your hand or just biting your thumb?
No, I'm thinking, well, it's old, it's new, it's whatever. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on something, um. I have been in contact with, and Jesse, you may not even know this yet, so this is an FYI for you. Um as I told you guys, we were already dealing with Huntington um bank. Huntington Bank is now in connection with Emmett. At um. And Jesse, so they are working on financing options and different things like that, obviously. And Jesse, so they are working on financing options and different things like that. Obviously, you know, all we're doing is information at this point. Um, I did reach out to a couple of other places. I haven't gotten response back from them except for Fifth Third. Um, Fifth Third was also one of the ones that was um. In the mix for the two nine 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 building, so I thought that was a great one to reach out to because they already have some of the background information. Honestly, I'm not going to ramble. Once again, um, I told you guys that we were going to have multiple banks in. At least getting information from multiple banks, so we're trying to dot our i's, cross our t's and give you guys the best options that we can. So, um, Jesse, you may, she, Fifth Third is not really going to have much for me until, oh, you do know because you told me I could sign that. Um, so it'll be, she said it would be next week before she got me any information, so she may even be reaching out to you guys after that as well. So that's just an update for you guys that we're working right now with Huntington and Fifth Third for financing options.
Okay, any, anybody have anything else regarding uh old business?
I, I, in terms of the facility, um. The thing that concerns me. Overall, the overarching concern for me is that the um estimated amount. Of one point eight million is already pushing uh the highest amount we would want to go. And my concern is uh that I doubt if it's going to get cheaper. Um, after the construction drawings and everything is completed. Um, so I don't think that's a good position for council to be in without having. I, I think there should be some what-if done. Uh, so, what happens i- if uh we exceed that? What are our plans financially for being able to? Handle that situation and or should we be looking to reduce? The cost somehow of the building, either by reducing the square footage or something else, I don't know, not the expert on on construction. But uh, the financial aspect concerns me.
I would say we're heading into uncharted territory here with regards to the pandemic and how that's affecting construction costs. You know, I can't wait to see what this is going to end up costing, and it's, that's why I'm. Kind of, you know, I'm not, I'm not a, going to be complaining about my uh, uh, or, you know, voicing my concerns about the size of the project at this point, because I got a feeling. That this could come back at an ungodly number, you know, that prevailing wage, where you can't find people to work. I don't know how you, how a guy would bid a project like this in this day and age. You know, so you're, I think you've got some real legitimate concerns there, Diane, because this thing could skyrocket.
Well, you know, and the, the, the good news is that they probably won't start construction until the end of the year or the start of next year. And so most of this year is going to be paper prep, proper document preparations. So, but yeah, it is, it is an uncertain market at this time. Um, but if we're intent on uh proceeding. I, I just, I, I'm, I'm glad that the mayor is, is working on financing. But we, we haven't really, I haven't heard. How we're addressing the what-if this goes. Beyond the one point that the, the amount that we're going to be looking for for financing, you know, what is, what is that um? What is the intent on that?
I think we ought to start finding out what the public's, you know, appetite for spending a million, one point seven. You know, because I.
It's one, it's one point eight, it's one point seven nine, so it's one point eight, it is.
Yeah, you know, I think we ought to start advertising that we're looking at spending that kind of money and see what the, you know. Because that was a, a big concern with the two nine nine buildings. A lot of people don't think we need that much space, which I understand. They don't, they may not understand what's going on, but that doesn't change the fact that people may be. Concerned that we're spending that much money. I know I am.
Well, and, and here's a couple of little que, and I, I'm, I'm definitely not going to disagree with anything Tony says. Here's what you're going to have. You are going to have people that do not want you to spend anything. You're going to have people that do not think we need it. Um, I've actually heard it this week. Wh- why do we need that? Um, here's the only thing that I will say, something's going to have to give as far as the buildings go. Um, regard, a- and I think everybody can agree with that. I mean, our windows, my, my personal windows. Busted and when it free, when it freezes, the whole inside of the window freezes. At some point, we need to do something because obviously we're paying electric bills and gas bills that are probably through the roof because. The building's a train wreck. Something's going to have to give. Um, I understand that it, it's standing and it's usable. That's number two, so I'm, I'm not arguing that point. The. The option of having a meeting, a town hall meeting or something is obviously not there unless we hold it outside in the grass. Um, so that's, you know, that's another issue that we have. Um, you post something on Facebook and you're going to have the typical twenty people love it or hate it, and they're going to argue back and forth forty-seven times. We already know that as well. Diane, I hear your concern, trust me, because I, I, I don't disagree with you, and I know Kim is already concerned about it. Um, at the number that we're at, so you're not wrong, but here's the, the, the only answer that I have for you is. Making the building smaller, um. First off, the police department, as Diane did the diagrams, is already about the square footage that we're at now. There is no reduction. I mean, you can take out a bathroom. Um, when you start looking at admin, that's about.
Well, I, you know, I, I'm not, I don't know if we're. If this. I don't know if this meeting is, is a discussion or not. I, I think that I, I, what I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking is, is uh. Not to get emotional about it, I think.
Right.
Play financial and, and if. I guess I'm asking perhaps that Gorman, uh, as Garmin. I'm Gorman. Garmin Miller uh. Uh, could help us out here. Um, and I think whether it's a discussion with the bank or simply a discussion with our. Fiscal people, Kim in particular, is uh to realistically look at. Um, you know, this is all about risk and, and uh. And risk mitigation. That's all I'm talking about. I'm not talking about. The police losing a locker room or whatever the hell. I, I'm talking about risk mitigation from a financial point of view. That's all I'm talking about here, so if we're walking along, uh, we need to be able to answer the question. Is that the, the what-if questions, what are the risks? And what can we do? And what are we doing to mitigate the risk from a financial point of view? So maybe this is a finance meeting discussion, but, but there's no way we should la 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 go along here having. Garmin doing all this architectural design work, and there may be an opportunity for Garmin to, if they know that we have a um. A specific number we're trying to hit. If they're going along with these architectural designs, at some point, they're going to have a hint. As to whether they were right or wrong about their one point eight, because that was just an estimate. That was the best guess at the time. So at some point, they're going to go along in this process, and they're going to have a pretty good idea that the numbers are not working out right. And I, as, you know, as council member, I wouldn't like, I would not like to pay for this next phase. Get all the way to the end in order to have them to present a two point five million dollar billing and like, oopsie, this is what it ends up with. And that, now we have a wonderful, again, wonderful design that. We can't afford, so what can Garmin do in terms of this next phase? In terms of how we contract with them to, in this next phase? To what, put a stop, put a, a stop in the middle of, at, at some point in the process, if they find that. That this thing's not working out, can they stop? Are we obligated contractually for them to finish the process, even though the number is going to come out to be totally undoable? Those are the kinds of things that, that I think needs to be discussed.
I hear exactly what you're saying, but here's, until the bid comes in, you don't know, and unfortunately, we've been down this road before. East Shore Court. Is a perfect example of until the bids come in, they can only, Mike Flickinger had no, and he does this for a living.
Yeah, but we're not talking about East Shore Court. We're not talking about, we're talking about, we're talking about. This, this is, it's going to be more than, okay, so.
The, you're not going to get.
Have to get a bid.
You're, you're not going to get a bid, and so like, for example, you know, and maybe Tony, uh, and maybe uh Tony is going to think I'm wrong, but. You know, if I were calling three places to have my floors done. I can say it shouldn't be more than five thousand dollars. I've had it done ten times in my life. A floor should be five thousand dollars. I call Tony, I call Mark, and I call Brian, and I get three thousand dollar bids.
You're not calling them, and they're not, you're not saying, they're not saying to you, give me fifty thousand dollars and I, I'll give you a bid, and that's. This is what I'm talking about. We're, we're asking the, them to do this next section. We're paying for this, right?
Yes, absolutely.
You're paying for their designs, but, and, yeah, but you're, you can't. Garmin can't control Tony's estimate. Tony can't control Brian's estimate. So when it actually goes to the public market. You don't know what the bids are going to come in, and that's all I was saying about East Shore Court. We sent out the, you know, when we got the bids, we were dumbfounded at, at the prices that the bids came back because. They can only, they only have the knowledge that they have, and Tony, I mean, and I'm going to agree with, with Tony on this. We're in uncharted territory when it comes to lumber prices. I don't know how many memes you guys have seen. Of the car going down the street and basically calling that guy a millionaire because he's got some wood in the back. Um, and that's the truth right now. I mean, I just did my fence, and it was triple what the first, you get it. Wood is so expensive right now, so I don't think, here's what I'm going to tell you, I don't think. If he, if Garmin had a crystal ball to know what wood prices are going to do six months from now when these bids come in. They would be well, they would be better well, so I hear you, Diane, but uh there's nobody that's going to be able to tell us until the bids come in. One point, and as, as an FYI, um, and Eric did point out. The one point eight is with the contingency, so the actual building itself is one point five six. Not that that's anything that great. There is contingencies already in that, so it is not actually one point eight. Um, on the high end, it's one point five with the extras. So that's an FYI.
So, if I could jump in, please, if I could jump in, I'm sorry, so. Couple of quick things, all right, in these processes. In order to get, y- 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 you kind of talk a little chicken before the egg, okay? You will have your discussions with finance. Emmett and your contingencies on the side, but you truly don't know anything, especially in this current market. Until we get a bid, until we have to spend the money, and you have to get a real bid. You can have the architect rolling dice all day long, making up little numbers, you know? And he's basing it, by the way, all the architects base this on a square foot rate based on other bids they're getting in for other jobs. That's how they're keeping it fairly consistent from week to week and month to month, all right, but things change. So if the bids come in at a weird place, okay? Your work's not lost, you're, either you can rebid it. Which is common, by the way, just so everyone's aware, on these regular projects in the larger municipalities, sometimes you go through a couple bids. In order to get it to where you want, or you, or you hold it, right, for six months, you know, and you rebid it again, and that's just the way it is. Your money's not wasted on spending on Garmin to get this done, because it's always going to be ready for a bid with some minor updates before the next bidding process. So just keep that in mind, please.
Guys, do we know? I, I personally haven't heard, but I wonder if anyone else has. If there is going to be any state or federal action with regards to lumber. I know they're. Talking about reversing some of the twenty seventeen steel tariffs. I wondered if anyone had heard anything about wood. Or product, you know, lumber being. Something looked into as well, just, just a thought, I know I haven't heard of it.
Don't worry about the commodities prices, we can't control them, or we can just go to bid and see where they come out at.
I, I know, I know we can't, I know Minerva Park cannot. Effectively lobby on, on international tariffs. I, I just wondered if anyone had heard anything that might be giving hope.
Well, and to Eric's point, of course, this next approving phase two does not approve. One point eight million dollars, it approves however much fifty seventy, what? However, many tens of thousands, Garmin Miller is going to charge us to get all this ready for bid. Which, as Eric just said, just needs to be done. Um, I'm actually sort of on the other side of the issue. Where I'm saying, you know what, I think our financial outlook's a lot rosier than we think it is. And yeah, if it gets to one point eight or two million, I think we'll be able to service that debt and. Have a nice building that'll last fifty years, and some people will complain and grouse. But some people will complain and grouse about a free lunch, so I just kind of ignore them and move on. And if they want to unseat me or run for council and put a stop to it come this November, good for them. I love participating.
Got two more years, wait.
Well, okay, but.
We're the ones up.
There's, there's, there's four people up, and that'd be enough to, to, to kibosh anything anyone wanted to do.
Yeah, but we are the ones who are up for it.
Can I just ask something really bad? Don't yell at me for what I'm about to do. I'm totally interrupting your meeting. David?
Yes, ma'am.
When is late cleanup?
Um, we have June twelfth and thirteenth. Or eighteen nineteen, the second or third Saturday, Sunday in June, depending on rain dates.
Okay, so the twelfth is a fir, the, the, the twelfth, Saturday and the thirteenth, Sunday are the two.
Yes.
Dates, okay, that's it.
Yeah, and the, the next week will be the rain dates.
Perfect. That was all I had, sorry, I'm. Setting up the dumpster.
Yeah, nineteen and twenty, yeah. Not eighteen nineteen.
All right, with that derailing, was that? I, I, I guess I was kind of lost on, we were talking about a lot of stuff, but I don't know that all that stuff we were just talking about. Led to any point of action or. Uh, you know, a thing we need to accomplish other than, you know, we had a delightful conversation.
I, I think the legislation's going to be in front of everybody, and they just need to make the decision if they want to. And i- invest in the money knowing that, you know, and we don't know. I mean, that's the whole. Process, and that's where we are, so the legislation's there. And. We'll see, you know, I, I, I see what Diane's saying, if we do this, if we do that, but right now, we don't know if we need to.
Right, and I, yeah, I, I get it, it's, there's a concern. Uh, okay, then was there any other old business uh to talk about at this time? All right, I know I had skipped over new business because for some reason I prefer new business last, uh, and I have a small piece of new business. Uh, and that is uh the mulch at the playground. Uh, it has not been refreshed in a couple of years, and it is looking like it is in need. And that needs to be, uh, so we need to put a few hundred bucks. I don't know how much it is, but it's been a couple of years. In fact, yeah, go ahead.
Is it regular mulch?
No, you got to get the playground stuff because the regular mulch is gross and dirty and the. The playground stuff is not gross and dirty. I mean, unless you, unless we want to field complaints of people saying, the mulch is gross and dirty, yeah, no, it's.
What's the last mulch, playground mulch?
I think so. I, I don't, I, I would assume, but I, I don't have a great recollection of the last mulching.
Well, the reason I bring that up is I thought our, the guys that did the landscaping, you know, improvements at the entrances are the ones that did that.
I don't, I don't think it's been mulched in a couple of years. It's, it, it may not have been mulched. It is, it is, I, my recollection is imperfect, but in my brain, I don't think there's been new mulch put. In the pit where the playground structure is since that playground structure went up. But I could be wrong about that. Um, I know MPCA used to pay for that mulch, and I, they stopped doing that. Three or four years ago, and I don't know that it's happened since then.
Well, I think we can handle that. I just, the only thing I'm going to do is make sure that, you know, whether or not we can use Parkland Fund money. Um, or whether or not we have something somewhere, but I'm assuming that I won't need to come to you guys to figure it out, so we'll do it.
Well, and I, I got a correction with someone, from someone uh here who has better record-keeping than I. And uh, the last time it was done was three years ago with the dirty mulch.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and it was done by uh, by the former village. Maintenance person.
Okay, well, we won't use the nasty mulch, is if you guys are okay with that, spending a little.
Thank you.
Yes, I would prefer to do that as well.
Yep, I've got to head off, guys, I work again tonight.
Bye.
Bye. Tony, you were saying something and got cut off.
I just, I haven't seen the playground mulch at Speedway.
Yeah, no, it's not at Speedway. You gotta, gotta go to like Kurt's Brothers or something, but it's, you know. Any other new business? Going once, going twice? All right, and. Going once, going twice. All right, anybody else have any other walk-on agenda items? This is it. Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, then, my friends, I believe, uh, we are ready, Diane, just to, to, just to remind you, both myself and Mayor Hughes will not be in attendance on Monday. So we are looking to you to run the show. Uh, and we thank you for that. And with that, I uh will adjourn this work session.
Back then.
Good weekend.
Everybody.
Enjoy your day.
Everyone's mother.
Bye.